Are we ready? Cindy? Okay. It is six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started with the special council meeting of the Johnston City Council. Cindy, let's call the meeting to order. Special meeting number 24-01. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
We have one item on the agenda for the special council meeting, and that is a public hearing on the FY 2024, 2025 city-proposed property tax dollars. We have a little script here that I will read just to make—oops, where'd it go? Just to make sure that I cover all the bases here. So we'll be opening the public hearing, but I will read this script before I do that. This is the time and place for the public hearing on the proposed property tax amounts for the city's FY 2025 budget. Notice of tonight's hearing was published in the Des Moines Register and posted on the city's website and social media accounts as required by law. Additionally, the Polk County auditor mailed notices of the hearing to taxpayers. Tonight's hearing is in addition to the city's regular budget approval hearing, which will occur on April 15, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., which will be our next regular council meeting, which is two weeks from this evening. After all testimony has been received and considered, the city council may decrease, but not increase, the proposed property tax amount for the city's FY 2025 budget. If the council decides to decrease the FY 2025 budget, that action will be taken at the April 15 meeting. I will now open the public hearing. The time is 6:03. City Administrator Poggy Weaver, would you please go through the presentation that we have on the budget?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and members of the Johnston community. This is our public hearing on the proposed property taxation for FY 2025. Really, two items on the agenda tonight. First, I'll review that and the property tax notices that went to property owners within the community. And also, I'll give some highlights. Even though we will review the budget in its entirety on April 15, I'll give some highlights on the FY 2025 budget. So on the proposed property taxation for FY 2025, last year during legislative session, legislature approved House File 718. And this made a number of changes in property taxation in the process. One of those is a new requirement that the cities, counties, and schools hold separate public hearings on the proposed property tax dollars for the upcoming fiscal year. The county auditor was required to mail notice by March 20, which occurred here in Polk County. Now, that content really was a notice that was specified by the Iowa Legislature. And I know I've received a number of calls just with confusion on the notice itself. But we'll walk through that tonight. And the format of the notice was set by the Iowa Department of Management. So that wasn't anything the county or the city had control over. I do need to specify or stress that this is not a tax bill at this point. It's just merely informational. And also important to note that this excludes other taxing entities. So the notice people received included school, county, and city, but other taxing entities, including the hospital, the county assessor, the community colleges, and DART, for example, are all excluded from that notice. So people do need to be cautious as they review the notices and understand that there's other taxing entities that are outside the control of the city that will also affect their FY 2025 property taxes. So this is the front page of the notice, and it includes information from the school, county, and city. And obviously, we only control the city portion of property taxation. But for all Johnston taxpayers, the notice they received is the same on the front page other than the mailing address on the notice itself. Diving in and looking at the city portion, because again, that's the portion the city council controls, I don't want to walk through this. So this first section in here, where you have current property tax and current tax rate, that is our actual fiscal year 2024 property tax dollars and levy rate. So that's our current fiscal year we're in today. This middle area, where you have the effective tax rate, this is one of those areas, a lot of confusion. But that is the levy rate that would be needed for fiscal year 2024, 2025, or our next fiscal year to generate the same property tax dollars as levied in our current fiscal year 2023, 2024. So a levy rate to generate $17.8 million, which is our current property tax generation in the current fiscal year, would decrease from 10.58—or excuse me, 10.85 to 10.28 due to the growth in the tax base itself. That's growth both in assessed values and new properties that are coming online within the community. And then this last section is the proposed property tax and tax rate for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. So the property tax dollars for general non-egg is $19.98 million, and egg-only is $18,344. And the property tax rate for general non-egg is $11,457.9. Now, the backside, the top section of it, is a table that is unique based on your quote-unquote "taxing district." And this is one of those areas, there's a lot of confusion, because in Johnston, we actually have five unique taxing districts. So you're either not in a TIF district, so after you see Johnston School, that'd be blank, or you're in one of the four other TIF districts that will be collecting increment next year. Most residents are in a non-TIF district. So this next slide really applies to them. But this is a unique breakdown that shows—and what really what the purpose of this table was to show was where is your property tax dollars going by authority? And this is current fiscal year, not the next proposed fiscal year. But you would see the top line is actually the Johnston School District, Polk County, this is the city of Johnston, it's the second Johnston there, so a little bit of confusion, wasn't very clear on the notice, and then all other taxing entities. So for the breakdown, 37.27% went to the Johnston School District, 19.41% went to Polk County, 31.11% goes to the city of Johnston, and then 12.21% goes to the other taxing entities. Again, that includes Bronlons Hospital, DART, the Polk County Assessor, and community colleges, to name the main ones in there. This is the breakdown for TIF districts. And generally, again, with TIF, those dollars do get diverted, flow through the city budget. But these are projects that are trying to create additional property tax value. And so they're not dollars that go to the city's general fund, and that we can't spend them for any purpose that would normally like public safety. They have to go towards either economic development incentives or infrastructure that supports those developments. And the idea behind TIF is we're creating value. But this does show in all the TIF districts, 89% going to the city of Johnston, 8.34% going to the Johnston School Districts, and 2.13% going to Polk County. And then no other taxing entities are receiving dollars through that. And again, this holds true for all of the TIF districts. The lower—on the back page again, the lower half, there is a breakdown of what property taxes would happen on $100,000 assessed property. And both—it shows a residential and commercial. But because the first $150,000 of commercial properties are assessed at the same rate as residential, they're the same. And so for the city of Johnston, in the current tax year, where the current levy rate, $100,000 assessed home, the property tax would be $593 using our proposed tax rate. Next year, that $100,000 home assessed home would be $531, and that's a decrease in taxes of 10.46%. However, there's the big issue that this state—and again, this is all required by the state, the county can't amend this, we could not amend it—we know that assessed values went up in the city of Johnston, so that's not the reality of what's happening. So this is a table that we put together to really show what the impact is to at least a residential home. And again, looking at the same $100,000 assessed home, you can see the rollback, and that's really the driver in this case. The rollback statewide went from 54.65% down to 46.34%. So when you have an assessed home, you apply the rollback, and that becomes your taxable value. So in the current fiscal year on a $100,000 home, that taxable value went from $54,650 down to $46,342. The levy rate of 10.86 in the current fiscal year and the levy rate of 11.46 in the next fiscal year generates, in the current fiscal year, a $593, next fiscal year, $531, which creates that—the lowering of a negative 10.46% in your property taxes. Reality, we know the values in Johnston went up 20.52%. So the median home value in Johnston in the current fiscal year is $291,650. In the upcoming fiscal year, the median home value is $351,500. When you apply that rollback of 54.65 in the current fiscal year, the taxable value of that home is $159,387.02. In the next fiscal year, even though it's substantially more value in assessed value, the taxable value went up a few thousand dollars to $162,894. So with the tax levy change in the current fiscal year, we're at 10.86, that tax for that homeowner becomes $1,730. And the next fiscal year, with the increase in value and levy rate, that goes to $1,866 or an increase of 786. This is probably the area where there's the most confusion. But we want to—we've always strived to provide transparency, at least here at the city of Johnston, and that's how it breaks down. The Department of Management did put together an information brochure. There's a four-page brochure about this new statement on our website. The web address is included on the bottom, all the tax statements, but it's dom.iowa.gov right on the front page, they have that information. I'm going to transition now to some of the FY 2025 budget highlights that really kind of shows some of the issues the city was facing in the current or in the upcoming fiscal year and what drove some of those increases. Again, just a reminder, for every dollar of property tax dollars that are collected by Polk County, the city of Johnston receives 31 cents. So we don't receive all the property tax dollars that come in or that citizens pay or residents pay on their property tax bill. And there is some complexity, and this breaks down some information. Again, we know for all properties, residential and commercial, we've seen an increase of 20.75% in values. But there's two restrictions that limit taxable growth value. First, statewide, residential properties can only increase value by 3% statewide. Now, Johnston did increase a little bit more than the statewide, so that limited our overall value gross increase to 4.95%. So even though values increased by 20%, the rollback limited that to 4.95%. Additionally, there is a new factor that came out of House File 718 that said if you have growth above 3%, below 6%, they then lowered it additional approximately 2%. If you were over 6%, then it would limit it down by 3 full percent. So for the city of Johnston, that further reduced it to 2.89% growth in just the value that we can actually tax. So obviously, with inflation, you know, those numbers are exceeding that. And additionally, within our growth, so even though we've seen growth, this factor—that 2% limiter—is actually taking some of that growth away. While our population grew by 3.2%, our actual taxable value increased less than that. So, you know, we kind of had some issues from that perspective. And again, just a different chart, but we've shown this earlier. For FY 2024, the average home value was $291,650. We've seen values—assessed values grow by 20.52% to $351,000. So for homeowners, their city property tax bill will increase by 7.86% or an increase of $136.27 over their current fiscal year we're in right now. This is a chart that shows the last 10 years of our historic levy rates in Johnston, the current fiscal year or the proposed fiscal year of 2025. We are $1,145. It is an increase of about 60 cents. Historically, that is not over the last decade our highest we've had the levy. It certainly does fluctuate from year to year. And it's really based on our needs and, you know, our levy rate response to the dollars we need to operate the city and continue to provide the services the council desires and the community desires. This is a comparison of city-only levy rates, so this is not any of the other property tax jurisdictions out there. But it does show communities in Polk and Dallas County greater than 4,000. And Johnston is in the middle here at 11.46. So this is what—this chart represents what other communities have said their proposed levy rates will be for fiscal year 2025 or the upcoming fiscal year. And you can see, we're right in the middle of what's out there. This is a table that shows all of our city expenditure by functional area. And so this is not just property tax dollars. This is dollars that include like road use tax dollars. This also includes some debt service dollars. This includes fees that we receive for different areas. So you can see how different departments receive funding throughout our organization. So 16% goes to public safety, 6% is public works, 7% goes to cultural recreational, 5% is our community and economic development, 3% is general government. Debt service, which really funds items like our streets, building facilities we've done, major equipment purchases, parks and trails, those payments are 19% of all the dollars we'll have. Capital projects is 12% of our dollars for next year. And then enterprise represents 32%. Now, when you dive into property taxes, you can see where those dollars go. 43% is public safety, 3% is public works. And that makes a lot of sense, because some of our debt service pays for our streets, but we get a lot of dollars in revenue from the gas tax and road use tax from the state of Iowa. 16% is cultural recreation. Again, that's really dependent on property taxes. 4% is community and economic development, 10% is general government, and 24% is debt services. So some impacts. Why are we seeing the levy increase and the dollar increases that we have? There's a number of factors. You know, we've seen—this is the first year Polk County is actually charging us for dispatching with some of their budget constraints. That's $125,000. As we were putting the budget together, we were told by our insurance carrier to expect an increase that was going to be about $393,000. We've all seen that with our homeowners' insurance policies. We have gotten some information recently that we're expecting about a $90,000 increase. So good savings there. We're still waiting for final pending numbers from our insurance broker. But one of the things that we didn't expect while we're seeing a lower increase, we are going to see a large increase in our deductible. So today, we have for our wind and hail, for example, we have a 1% or we have a $25,000 deductible per facility. Next year, it's going to be the higher of 1% of the building value, or 25,000. So for a public safety building, for example, that deductible will be $208,299. For City Hall, that deductible will be $147,633. You know, we run a very tight machine. We maintain reserves really at the minimum. So we're going to have to talk about what we do and how we handle that. And, you know, we'll have some meetings with our insurance broker again later this week. And in our next meeting, April 15, when we set the budget, you know, we will provide some guidance on how we think we should handle that. But reality is, we may need to keep the levy rate with that higher $390,000 number in mind, because we don't have the reserves today to be able to pay those deductibles. If you think about it, we had a hailstorm, we had to re-rough both this and the public safety. You know, if you had a hailstorm here, you're likely going to have a hailstorm at public safety. You know, that's $350,000. We don't have the reserves for that, the way our funding works. Additionally, we have contractual requirements with our collective bargaining agreements, and then just with market pressures. You can see the wage increases that we're looking, they're pretty substantial this year. And then with the Ignite facility, you know, contractually, we've agreed to buy certain amount of time in that facility, which is under construction, expected to open in early 2025 at this point. So we've budgeted really for the first month—or for the first five months of the facility usage there of $150,000.
And just for clarification, Mike, that is, we're paying that fee so that our residents have the ability to access that facility without having to pay a fee themselves?
Correct. Correct. And certainly, we haven't figured out how, you know, we have contractually said there's certain blocks of time that we'll purchase. Now, how we translate that to getting our residents in the facility, those are details we still need to work out. Good question. New positions, obviously, as a community that's growing, we're looking to add two new police officers. Certainly, this—we knew going into last budget year that we were behind on the number of police officers we have. And in fact, we've been phasing and bringing in what we need to fully staff that department. So next year, we anticipate two more officers. With the new Johnson Grimes Fire District model, you know, as of July 1, all the fire equipment actually will come under the city of Johnston, so there's a mechanic position. Now, some of that will be reimbursed by the city of Grimes, but there's a cost there of bringing another mechanic on. We have found that as we serviced our fire equipment, we have great savings doing that versus going out in the open market, so we believe that it's a prudent move to do that. With the retirement of a key position here at the city, we've taken this opportunity to split that position into two. And so there is dollars to split the Assistant City Administrator and Finance Director into two positions. And that's logical with some of the growth we're experiencing. And then additionally, finally, with the Ignite facility, there's another position to support the activity that our residents can take part in at the Ignite facility. So there's some highlights of the overall budget, certainly as we—at the next meeting, we'll do a deeper dive into the budget with the public hearing we'll have on April 15. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council or public has.
Council, have any questions for Mike? There's a public hearing on this item, so if you're here to speak to the issue, we would ask that you come up to the podium here and give us your name and your address. One thing before you do that, I just want to remind everyone, this is a public hearing on the budget present—budget this evening. Any deliberation or decision-making by the council will occur at the next meeting, when we actually deliberate, discuss what that budget is, and make decisions on it then. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is just to receive public comment and tell us what you're thinking, and so we can take that into consideration. Would anyone like to address the council on this item?
Good evening. And my name is Jim DeCreef, and I live at 5633 Richters Court, here in Johnston. I've lived here for 17 years, and Ron and they don't live too far from me. I'm here tonight to share my concerns and frustrations with my proposed property tax increase of 10.1%. I did appear before you last year and asked you to consider the growing burden property taxes are being placed on property owners. On this year's budget year statement to owners and taxpayers, two reasons stated for the increase were to cover inflationary costs and maintain quality services. I would like to point out that property owners have experienced inflation and would also like to maintain their quality of life. But we have all had to make tough choices due to inflation and wages not keeping up, especially those who are retired, on a fixed income, or trying to start a family. Every dollar given to the government in the form of taxes is a dollar not available to help citizens maintain their standard of living, spend on helping others, or locally on our businesses. As property owners must make budget decisions on what we can afford and what we cannot afford, the city should have to do the same. It is a difficult decision, but one that needs to be made. We do not have the ability to go to our employers and tell them we need a 10% raise because of inflation, or we would like to maintain our standard of living. I strongly oppose this property tax increase. Please, take another look at your budget and consider ways to ease the burden of property tax increases. I appreciate your time, your attention, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to address the council?
I am Rob Wood, 603 Dogwood Circle. Just to add to what he said, you know, we've been facing inflation for, what, two and a half years above what is expected, the average being 3%. I think I read somewhere that when you really take a look at the economy and everything that people use on a daily basis, that really the inflation rate is probably around 18%. And that's been persistent for probably about a year and a half. I've read a lot of the government statistics. Their numbers don't make sense, because they don't actually tell you how they're calculating it. And it's up to their discretion by law that they can include and exclude whatever they want out of that basket, and that's fine. But, you know, this year, I received my biggest raise, and it will—80% of it will go to property taxes. I cannot get ahead in this city, I'll be honest with you. And I've just thought to myself, you know, in looking at your—it's—and I'll be honest with you, I'm more let down by Polk County than I am by Johnston, because everywhere else, they seem to be getting a decrease in property, except for here in Johnston, where the county assessed—my house, 22%—they assessed it at the max last year, which I protested, said it was immoral, but of course, by law, you have to look at the adjacent properties and how much they're valued, et cetera, et cetera. But it was—it was a shock, because they made up for the property taxes on that side of the equation, and this year, they're making it up on the percentage side, because next year, they can do it on the assessment side again. So it has—yeah, when I got that piece of paper, I was just beside myself. I was like, what have I got to do to get ahead? And to feel like I don't have to watch what I do every single month, that, you know, my family—we don't go out to all these places here in Johnston and for family fun, because that costs actually quite a bit of money. I'm used to places like Omaha and St. Louis, where they do have family-friendly services like the zoo, where it's free in St. Louis. And there's a lot of other amenities, like in Omaha, that you can go do for free. But here, everywhere you go, it costs money to get in and to do things as a family. So this is more an expression of my feeling. It's not against any of you. It really comes down to the county, what they did in assessments last year, and then on the flip side, this year, with the percentages, and then seeing that now the cities have to support the dispatch services, et cetera. It just is like, when does this stop and where does this go? Because it literally is becoming truly unsustainable. I don't know anyone else's financial situation. I know around me, I have a lot of retirees, and they are—you know, I can only imagine what—I guess because they live in Johnston, they were set up well, and I hope so, too. But anyway, that's just my observation, and just thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council?
I'll be brief. I realize we're all competing with Caitlin Clark time right now. My name is David Thompson. I'm 8420 Sanford Place in Johnston. And I am not nearly as well-prepared as our first speaker. And I am not nearly as well-prepared as our first speaker. I thought, very nice job, so well done there. But the increases that we're talking about here really don't feel grounded in sound financial management, just to speak frankly. I mean, we're, we're seeing increases here in our properties of over twenty percent. Twenty percent increases, and my day job is in housing finance. That's not reality, it's not what's happening. I've protested that, I realize that's not for this forum, but it directly relates into our financials. So people are getting hit with this, and it's unrealistic. If you look at square footage, per square footage, sales prices, and compare them, I have three comps within three blocks, they're not close, they're not hitting this. So now we're taking inflated base asset, and we're increasing the rate that we're applying to that inflated base asset. We're saying, okay, we come to this value where we get to seven point eight six percent increase. No one in this room has seen their income go up by seven point eight six percent year-over-year. I come to this meeting admittedly not as prepared as I'd like to be. I haven't dived into our budget to see, okay, where are these increases? We saw some highlights, thank you. That's the only helpful thing here. I might not be the sharpest knife in the drawer, there's no way in heck I can follow this. I'm a math major, I'm a certified financial planner, a chartered financial analyst, and I have notes over this thing, I can't make heads or tails of it. The only point where I got to any kind of sanity, that I could take notes, is following your chart to say, okay, I can see it goes up by eight percent. Sorry, I rounded, seven point eight six. None of us are seeing this increase. So I'd strongly encourage you, go back, push on this, push on this budget. Everyone here, everyone here is doing that at home, I'm sure of it. We're doing it at work, we need to be doing it here, we need to push hard. This is the time for tough choices. That's it, thank you for listening.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Hello, I'm Suzanne Tolbar, I'm at sixty-five forty Northwest Fifty-Fourth Court in Johnston. And I've lived here over thirty years. I just want to mention, I'm not as prepared as the first gentleman. I will echo what the previous person just said. I understand this was a DOT form, but it, you explained some, had some excellent observations there or documents, we were trying to take pictures with our cellphones. I believe we'd done a dense service to the entire Johnston, all the Johnston residents, because we haven't shown this. But while you explain this tonight, based on what I'm understanding is, our property taxes already went up, and so when you take the current percent of our property taxes, you will have more money, right? But now you're going to want to raise what you get, so then you have more. So I think, if I understand it correctly, correct? And so that's where it's a little difficult for me to decipher exactly what this is. And I know you're speaking for the city, but next week, we get to talk to the school that wants more. And already, we have Polk County. So if there's some way that you could get an understandable document out to the residents, that would be very helpful. Another confusion point for me is that you talked about FY twenty-five, you talked about FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Is this to take effect in July of twenty-four? Fiscal year starts in July. And so that's where the document's trying to be consistent from there. I would echo what everyone said. I don't understand what the increase, why asking for a higher percent when you're already getting more dollars? So I don't have anything else prepared, but I strongly suggest that you provide more information to all the Johnston residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none. Just a, a little bit of feedback to all of our speakers and everyone, frankly, who is in the room this evening. In terms of the information that our city administrator provided tonight on how to read the form that you all received in the mail, that information currently is on the website under the city council's agenda for the meeting this evening. That slide, slide deck is there. But maybe there's a way we can move it up front someplace on our website, so people find it easier to access. Because we do think it's important that everybody understand that form that we all received in the mail was just, just absolutely confusing for all of us. Even the city administrator said, I can't figure this out.
I'll be, I'll be really honest, when I received it a week and a half ago, I had a panic attack, because I thought there was an error in some of the data. And it, it wasn't until I realized how they were defining taxing districts, and that we got divided up into five taxing districts, did it make sense. And so this, this was not a form that the city encouraged the legislature to send out. In fact, I would tell you, when this was being debated last year, I provided some examples from the state of Minnesota on proposed property tax notices that are sent up out, up in Minnesota, because it's very clear, concise, this is what your taxes were last year for each taxing entity, this is what it is next year. It made sense. It, it really, what, what you received does not make sense. So I'd encourage you to call your state legislator, because we don't control that form that went out. We want transparency, we want people to understand their property taxes, that's important. So it should, it is disappointing, and I share that frustration.
Yes.
Then I would say, we can talk to, we said to talk to the state?
State legislators.
Right, so in the meantime, you may be voting on this April fifteenth. So between April first and April fifteen, as more residents maybe have a better understanding of what's being asked, what if there's more individuals wanting to have another public hearing before you vote that do feel very much against this? Because I feel against, I, I, I don't agree with this.
What I, what I would suggest is if, if others have questions, don't hesitate to call City Hall. Talk to Mike, talk to our finance director, get the answers to your questions. But before we make any final decisions on the budget at our next meeting, there'll be another opportunity for everyone to, to address the council, absolutely.
Thank you, I was just hoping maybe you could send something out that others had thought, well, okay, yeah, they'll do this. Like at first, I was talking to my husband, he's like, well, they're going to do it.
Now, we might be able to post something on our website, you know, if we were to mail it out to all of our residents, that would be a pretty substantial bill.
But, but if you, yeah, update it.
Put it on our website.
Thank you.
In terms of some of the substantive comments that you made tonight, first of all, just thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I think this is the first time we've had this kind of a turnout, when we've had any discussion on budgets. And we've actually been talking about the budget now for about a month and a half, but even.
I'd say three months.
Well, three months, yes, yeah.
If you look back at our agendas, every work session we have had in the month of January, February, and March, was dedicated to working through this budget and making some of the hard, challenging choices that we had to make to kind of get to the start of it. So I think that's important. If you, if you were here for any of those meetings, you would have seen some real strong back-and-forth discussion about those. And so that's all part of that process that we go to put together a budget. And we're, because we're all, we're like you, we're all homeowners in Johnston too. So we're, we, we, we get, we're going to have, the property tax bill that you're all dealing with, we all deal with too.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I will address it to Mr. Decrip, Decrip? I'm never, I never say it right. I actually want to thank you for your postings on Nextdoor. You, you pointed out the issues you were seeing. And every time someone would respond to you, you would reply, come to the city council and tell them what you think. And I think our attendance tonight is double what it was last year. Which is still kind of sad, honestly. And, you know, the comments you get from social media, a lot of them said they would show up here. I don't think they did. And that's unfortunate.
Some of the biggest decisions that we make as a city council involve the budget and the budget-making process. And so it's, it's important that you be here to give us that kind of feedback and, and have the discussion with us.
And the Councilman Cope, when he referred to previous meetings on the budget, those are all recorded meetings. So I would say that our filing system for those videos is not as great as I'd like, but it is out there. And there's some deep dives into budgets, if you'd like to listen to those.
The other thing that I would share is that at our next city council meeting, where we will have deliberation and decision on the budget, the city administrator will be making another presentation that really does a deep dive into, you know, what's being proposed, and where the money would spend, and what, where the money would be spent, and what is being spent on. So he gave a high-level, you know, overview of that this evening, but we'll actually get into that a little, quite, quite a much, quite a bit deeper at the next city council meeting, so.
Can we get a deep dive into the school district aspect? The other ones were all there, and I can understand that, but I want to see what the district.
Well.
How they're splitting up their budget, and how they're using it. Because that's the biggest chunk right there.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair request. We are not involved in their budget-making process, and so that's, that's a request that you'll have to make to the school district, to the, to the school board. So I hope to see you all back in a couple of weeks, so that we can hear some more of what your, what your concerns are, your comments, or hopefully, hopefully, we'll, by the, by, by that time, we'll have a better understanding. And if not, we'll, we'll, we'll work through it that evening and make sure that everybody gets all of their questions answered. Anything else, council? Okay. We will close the public hearing then at seven forty, forty-one?
Six forty.
Six forty-one? You bet.
Thank you.